Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 27, 2014 Public Works Finance Committee. On my right is Councilmember Dan Carscallan. To my left is newly moved Councilmember Art Bedke, who's got a house for sale, by the way. And to his left is Gary Redner, City Supervisor. I'm Walter Steed, President of the Council and Chairman of this committee. The first item of business is the approval of the October 13, 2014 minutes. We have been given a change, or an additional sentence, rather, in item four of that, of those minutes.
I am okay with that change and would go ahead and approve those minutes with that change.
I'm okay with the minutes and with the change.
Stephanie will consider them approved. Thank you. Okay. Item number two, a development agreement and request for waiver of public improvements at 717-719 South Harrison Street. Scott Bontrager and looks like his able assistant Les McDonald is in attendance as well.
So presented before you today, Randy Atwood and Mary Jo Knowles are proposing to replace an existing family dwelling on Lot 12, block four McGregor's second addition with a new duplex. And I'll give you kind of a, an idea of where all this is located.
They just change the remote periodically to keep staff confused.
So this location right here is on the northwest corner of Eighth and Harrison. There is currently a, there's currently a duplex located on the southern portion of the lot here, and there was a single-family home located here. The proposal is to remove the single-family home and replace it with a new duplex. Here's a better view of it here, looking northwest from Harrison and Eighth. You can see the existing duplex. Looking further north, looking to the west from Harrison Street, this is the existing duplex here, and this was the existing single-family home on the northern portion of the lot. And just another view, looking southwest from Harrison Street. So the proposal that we have here for, I guess we should go through the city code Title V, Section 1.5. E3, states that no building permit shall be issued for a principal structure unless improvements required by Section 5-1-5 subsections D and E have been shown on the plans and approved by the city engineer and constructed bonded for or specifically waived by city council. So for this particular project, a new principal structure is being proposed, oops, on this northern portion of the lot, which would then enact frontage improvements along the entire eastern frontage of the property. So here we have a schematic of the frontage improvements that would be enacted based upon the city code for this particular property. Right now, existing out there is a grindings capped gravelled street, and there is not currently any curb and gutter sidewalk out there. So with these improvements by code, it would add half a street, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and then the driveway approaches to the property. We received a letter recently from Mr. Atwood and Mrs. Knowles requesting a waiver of public improvements. So they are here to plead their case for the waiver of public improvements as allowed by city code for this particular project. City staff has put together a estimate if they choose to go the route dependent upon decision of city council for waiving the public improvements. City staff has put together the estimate of what it would cost for us to construct the frontage improvements for this project if the applicant chooses to pay a cash in lieu of construction or dependent upon the situation if the improvements are waived themselves. So just to get an idea of what the improvements were based upon, this is the city standard for the local street for a street like this, which is a 36-foot roadway section, which their portion here would be the 18 feet of roadway improvements plus the curb gutter, green strip, and sidewalk. So I guess at this time, I would welcome applicants for...
If I could just do one additional comment here. What we're looking at is really a situation where we have an application for new development, and as Scott has laid out, under the city codes, that applicant would be responsible for making frontage improvements to the public right-of-way that's currently undeveloped to current standards. So that is the condition that would be set upon the building permit for principal structure under the current city codes. The options that are then available to the city are to require that those improvements be made with the issuance of the building permit, and there could be a development agreement that would establish a timeline in which those improvements are to be made. Typically, when we see these, it would be something in the range of a nine-to-12-month period anticipating next summer construction for those types of improvements, considering the time of year we're at now. So that would be the first option. The second option would be potentially a deferral or deferral of those improvements with a payment by the applicant for the cost of that public infrastructure plus the markups that are specified in the city code, which is a total of about 22 percent.
Twenty-two percent.
Twenty-two percent. Or the third option, which is also before you today, is the request, to consider the request from the applicant for a waiver of the public improvements. And the council certainly can choose to pursue that option either in part or in its entirety. So they could waive all of the public improvements, which is what is requested by the applicant, or some portion of the public improvements. This particular parcel has seen a similar request in the past. In 2003, in the minutes or in your packet, a, actually, almost identical project was proposed by the applicant to build a duplex on the northerly portion of the land. The applicant requested a waiver of public improvements at that time, and the council chose to waive the paving of the street, but not the rest of it. But as far as we know...
Curb, gutter, and sidewalk.
Curb, gutter, and sidewalk. That project did not move forward. The single, or the new duplex, the northerly duplex was not constructed, and so here we are again, 11 years later, having a similar discussion about a very similar type of application. I think maybe one difference is here, we've got some storage units also included that may not have been back in 2003. But at that time, the, as the minutes indicate, the council decision was to waive the paving portion only. And the applicant has requested a waiver of all the improvements at this time.
The storage units did not trigger improvements?
Storage units are not considered a principal structure with the committee of development department, so it would be the duplex itself that would trigger the improvements.
Okay. And Les, I believe you may have with you a listing of deposits that have been made to the city over the years where the council has not required the improvements at the time of the, of the construction, and we're holding money on quite a few that are out there?
I do have a list. Part of what Councilmember Steed is referring to is that the city has, in the past, allowed for payment in lieu of improvements. It was a, I would characterize it a rarely, a fairly reasonable, what, the words are gone, a fairly common occurrence, you know, 10 to 15 years ago. We have, actually still have deposits on hand from some years back, and when I arrived here in 2003, that was a common practice. In certain situations where the rest of the street section had not been approved, or it was quite some distance to improved portions of the roadway, or for some other reason it didn't make sense for the perspective of the city to require that those improvements be installed at that time. So we did allow that, you know, fairly on, early on in my time here. Part of what we saw, though, starting in about 2005 and '06, was the escalation of pricing. So, and as you recall, you know, that we had the boom of housing back in that timeframe. We were seeing doubling and tripling of the cost of building infrastructure. So at that point, the city chose to stop taking those payments in lieu of construction simply because of the fact that if we took a payment within a year, two, it was not sufficient to actually build the improvement it was meant to cover. So there's a real gap between 2005 and 2012 where we did not have any of those deposits made to the city. Since then, until '12 and '13, we've seen two recent ones up on the northern Mountain View, on the west side, up there near the swimming pool. So we've, you know, gone back to accepting some of those in certain types of situations. Typically, it's done when the city believes that there is going to be a challenge in coming up with a design for what that section should be with respect to what a roadway may ultimately be.
We don't know what we want you to build.
Exactly. Exactly. Sometimes there's a question of, well, is it disconnected from everything else in the system? And that is often asked. So there's always a bit of a trade-off of, do you go ahead and require that be installed now, even if you know what the road looks like or will look like, even, and it's disconnected from the rest of the system? Or do you go ahead and have it constructed rather than doing a payment in lieu of to avoid that price escalation issue and being able to fund it at some point in the future? If the funding is not sufficient in three years, five years, to pay for what was proposed, it has to be paid for in some other way when that road improvement is eventually done. So, yes, I do have a list of those. There's, oh, so about eight or nine that we have on file, varying in, you know, age and, and amount. Essentially, they're all related to half, almost all related to half-street improvements on roadways that were not completely improved, so similar to this type of situation.
And does, is one of those Arbor Crest? Did you tell me that earlier?
There is one, actually, on a portion of Arbor Crest, and that one's quite, been around a while. I don't know the details on that one specifically. We'd have to do a little research as to why.
If it was done with the original construction, Gary, I believe Arbor Crest was constructed in '88, '89.
Mm-hmm.
Because I moved here in '89 and it had just been done.
Yeah.
What is that called for? Half-street and curb gutter?
Yeah, it just says half-street paving on Arbor Crest.
Did you know?
Like I say, I'd, we'd have to research that one further to see.
You know if it's the full length of Arbor Crest?
I, I do not.
It is the length from, I can't remember what the cross street is from Orchard.
Trail road?
It's a trail road. It's south of Trail Road where it takes that corner and hooks back into Orchard.
That would make sense.
So this is not the part, and there's a reason I'm asking all this about that, this is not the part in front of the current homes. It's the part coming back to Orchard?
There was one home, I believe, that was constructed south of that intersection, and that's the one that had the...
That makes sense.
Had the...
So is this, this is a single house?
I believe so.
Based on the, on what's here, I would, I think that's probably accurate.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
One of the other things, too, and I, Les alluded to it, the situation that we recently had on Mountain View Road, you recall some of the issues we had with that sidewalk? The road had to be engineered at one time so the curb wouldn't have to be taken out again. That's one of the issues you have in these situations. You have substandard streets. You have to engineer the whole thing so that you don't come back in and take a curb that was poured two years before and have to pull it out. So that was some of the council's reasoning for taking the payment in lieu of. And Mr. Atwood noted in his letter that they would not oppose an LID, which I believe was the same arrangement that we had back in 2003. And council has historically, at least in the last 15 years, 20 years, has historically not wanted to force LIDs. And otherwise, you know the rules on having a voluntary LID, you need 60 percent of the property owners to, in a residential area, to consent to having the LID. So I don't know how realistic LIDs are either unless all the property owners get together. There are different rules, of course, for multifamily and duplex absentee landlords, so there's a different rule about approving LIDs. So again, I don't know how realistic those are. On the other hand, council, at least back in the past, has wrestled with, do you then take the cost and just put the cost, that payment into a bank? What happens if that roadway is never constructed?
What happens if it costs two and three times as much?
Precisely. Exactly. So really, it's, as noted in 2003, one of the things you have to look at is, are, do you anticipate in the foreseeable future that this roadway will be constructed? So that's just something to think about.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I presume Ms. Knowles and Mr. Atwood are here, so I'm gonna ask them in a minute if they have anything else to add, but do y'all have any questions of staff at this point?
Well, I was just gonna mention, like, on the Mountain View deal, we know that we're gonna make improvements on Mountain View.
Precisely.
And that was the whole reason for that, is we didn't know what they were gonna be at that point, so.
You bet.
And I'd like to hear what else anybody has.
Any question for...
All right. I'd like to hear the rest of the info.
Folks, do you have anything else to add to what staff has said?
The only thing is that...
You need to come forward. Sorry, we're recording this.
The only thing that we felt is that it doesn't make any sense for us to go ahead and put the sidewalks in, like you said. You know, if we do that, when they improve that street, they'll all have to be taken out because the road really does need to be upgraded to, you know, new standards and probably leveled and stuff, because I don't think it's ever been paved. That's the only thing that we feel, but...
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Question for Les and Scott, whoever would like to take it. Playing off Ms. Knowles' comment, what's the likelihood if Public Works were to be told by council, "We want it built," in getting a design that will hold up in the future when and if adjacent improvements are made? I mean, I understand, you gotta start somewhere, so...
Yeah. Well, I think really it becomes an issue of timing. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the common practices we've seen in development agreements is to give a term to the applicant in which to get it constructed. And if we were to look at a term that would maybe carry us through this time next year, for instance, about a year, then that would give the engineering staff some opportunity to come up with at least a vertical design for the roadway center line and convey that to the applicant's engineer to then actually develop construction drawings for their portion. Now, that can be done, and you do run some risk, certainly, of things changing in the future when you do a complete road system design. We have a little advantage here in that there are planter strips, which then allows some vertical flexibility between the curb line and the sidewalks, and so you're not necessarily as tied to that hard sidewalk surface if, for some reason, the curb line needed to change. So if there was potential for a need at some point in the future to maybe replace a portion of it, it wouldn't necessarily be the whole thing. It really becomes a question of the workload of the engineering department, whether they could come up with a preliminary road design. If we're talking a block-long section that's tight, intersections on either end, you know, it's not a large job. So I believe it's something that probably could be worked in, if that's the course of action that the council would like to pursue.
And in this particular case, looking at the calendar, construction wouldn't be until next construction season?
Next summer, anyway. And so we do have some time to work on that, if that is the desire of the council.
Yes, sir.
So on that street section we're, we're talking about, you know, should it, should it get built out? We're talking about with a planter strip?
Yes. Well, that would be the section that the council adopted here recently, which includes the standard planter strip. There are some topographic challenges out there with respect to sidewalk placement.
If we went along the...
See a bit of a grade change there near that front house.
Right.
Dropping down a bit, so there, there may be needs for, for some retaining wall work in there, perhaps?
Right. On one side or the other, depending on how it comes out.
Certainly.
So I guess my, my point I'm making is, is we may not necessarily, well, we may want a sidewalk, we may not necessarily want the curb and gutter until we go to the paved street section.
And that certainly is one of the options. It's one that the engineering staff identified, that, you know, would it make sense, perhaps, to put in the walk connecting to the walk on Eighth Streets and get it at least down to the alley, which is the furniture of this lot, and perhaps defer the curb and the asphalt work? You know, that is an option. It's kind of a partial step, if you will. So, yeah, that's there as well.
Scott, that's a paved intersection?
The intersection is paved, yes.
So, and you've got curb and gutter on the east and west, so you've got a starting point to the north.
Yeah.
The next intersection is...
Is an alley.
Well, the next adjacent, the end of the property is the alley. The fo, the next intersection is unpaved and no curb.
It is paved up there as well.
I'm sorry?
It is paved up there as well.
Seventh street.
Seventh street.
So you've got a beginning and an ending point for putting a street in between the two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm kind of leaning that taking some payment in lieu of pending construction, anyway, and at least getting the city's work done, because it says here in the packet that the city does not yet have a design or funding for this stretch, so using the time to at least come up with a plan for everything maybe up to the curb, but beyond that, because seeing any asphalt out there, that thing would be pounded to smithereens in a complete waste before the rest of the street got paved. But I do think that it's incumbent upon the applicants to contribute to the sidewalk planter strip area for sure in the nearer term than the further term, and whether that comes through payment in lieu of at the moment to facilitate that later on or the actual construction next year, that's a little bit up in the air. I'm waiting to hear some more before I really...
Well, I would lean towards having the sidewalk built, you know, but, and then if we did an in lieu of, it would be for the curb and, and street improvements. But if we got the sidewalk and the planter strip started, you know, whether, whatever design we may have as far as retaining walls and things like that to make sure everything fits in the, in that where there's terrain challenges, then, you know, that, I could, I could be a little more comfortable with that.
So does the city actually have any contemplation in the near term for finishing this one, two-block stretch?
It is not something that's in our program at this point.
Yeah. I don't see it as, it's probably not rising to the top of the heap right at the moment.
Well, it's, you know, with most of our pavement management program funding going to, you know, the maintenance aspects of, you know, chip seals and story seals and then, you know, limited paving work, funding for, you know, construction of roadways like this is pretty hard to find.
And to this point, the city has not paved gravelled streets without some overriding...
LID or something?
Either an LID or an overriding reason to do so.
Generally, through LIDs, we have been doing the grinding applications in recent years, which, which helps, but I think as a matter of course, we've not typically gone out and paved gravelled streets, I guess.
Yes, sir.
With the loss of the clean air monies, we have not paved gravelled streets. We typically try to encourage it through an LID with significant participation from the city through our developer participation account, but no, we just don't target a street and then pave it. It's not been our policy in 20 years to do that.
Improvements to infrastructure in front of properties or the property owners, or at the property owner's expense to this point. In other words, a developer going from the edge of town out into a wheat field pays for all of it, the people buying the lots, pay the developer for his cost plus profit, and the city then takes over maintenance after that. So these presumably, presumably these lots, when they were acquired back in the 20s, 30s, 50s, 60s, whatever, the price does not include improvements to the street infrastructure. It's buying the gravelled street that's there when they, when they get it.
We can only presume, the council made the decision some time ago, and that is before my tenure, that improvements, gravelled streets were not to be considered improved streets, and because of the maintenance cost, all those sorts of things, and that whatever the city's, the city's standards were at the time, that a new principal structure were to trigger those improvements would take that gravelled street up to whatever the city's standards were, which is exactly the situation we have here, but I can't say when it was purchased.
I think gravelled streets were allowed in Moscow during development up until the '70s, probably.
Stokes Edition, yes. That was the last subdivision, yes.
Okay.
Well, I would say that we move it to the full council for a...
So your recommendation, then, that you put in sidewalk improvements and wave these street and curb?
At least sidewalk improvement and, and the planning strip. I don't know that...
I'm, I'm leaning to a curb as well.
Curb as well.
I mean, they've got, they've got curb gutter and pavement at two ends of this block, and...
Depended on the city staff coming up with a plan.
Scott and Les can certainly take a ruler or something, whatever they need to use, computer, and draw a line between the two to figure out where this thing ought to, ought to lie when it's built. I'm, I'm just reluctant to, I'm certainly against waiving. I'm reluctant to take payment in lieu of due to the fact of the inflation of the cost of construction, whether it's fast or slow, we're not gonna have enough money to pay for it, I don't believe. And I've watched other communities where they have, where they have waived, and then when they come back around trying to get them, nobody can either find the agreements or the property's changed hands and the new owner says, "Hey, wasn't me. I didn't do a deal." And they end up with the citizens of the entire community having to pay for the property, you know, for, for adjacent to, to an individual's property. So, yeah, Gary, let's, let's move it to full council.
Is there consensus recommendation from this committee, then, or do we take it in as a new item?
I think that I'm, I'm of the mind, then, I'll, I'll go with the curb and sidewalk.
Yep.
And planter strip.
Yeah. Get it out to the street frontage.
At least that much.
Pending the design over the next eight months by city staff.
And typically, Art, I don't think, if council, if council were to direct such, you wouldn't take payment in lieu of from the property owner, because there would be a development agreement calling for those improvements to be made.
Right.
And staff would work on design and, and work with their engineer to get the approved design of what would be constructed within the timeframe allowed.
Just to avoid tearing out that which has been put into place, which is ridiculous.
Okay. We will bring it through.
Les had a question. Maybe one, there's one more aspect now based upon that direction, which is the street standard calls for an eight-foot wide planter strip behind the curb and the five-foot sidewalk beyond that, which essentially takes you out and slightly beyond the, the right-of-way line. In this case, in the southerly portion of the lot, the, the topography drops off quite a bit down to the house. And so one of the things that we've, we've talked about a little bit is could that planter strip be reduced? And the, the adopted standard allows a reduction from eight feet to five feet as, as the minimum, is, is what can be done through city engineer approval. If there's a desire or a need to go less than five feet or to not have a planter strip, that would also need council authorization.
I have no problem if the topography doesn't allow it. I'm not interested in putting a retaining wall on these people.
Okay. And so we would look at that as part of the package, then, at least in a, in a limited area where the topography warrants it to remove planter strip for, you know, a portion if need be.
Yeah. Up until recently, we may not have it anymore, but we allowed sidewalks to go above the curb where you had a, a drop-off or a change in grade up into the lot that precluded being able to get it in.
And there were some changes in the last set of standards that set that five-foot minimum through, through staff, and part of the reason for that was that sometimes there was pressure upon staff to say, "Hey, you know, I don't want to have to do a bunch of grading out here, even though it's a big wide-open site, and so let me have that variance, if you will." So that's why the five-foot is in there and why it then would need to come, you know, come through the council for something less than that.
Yeah. It's different if it's a big, wide-open site, other than where we're trying to put puzzle pieces in.
Yes, absolutely. You're fitting it in.
Right. Okay, Gary?
Yep. Regular agenda?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, welcome. I wish us to talk about moving some money around, some irrigation... Dwight wishes to talk about moving some money around, some irrigation money from one park to another park. And I believe has reason to want to do so.
Thank you, and that pretty much sums it up. Any questions?
Glad to help.
Maybe you should tell us where.
Yeah, well, what I've got here is Etani Park, excuse me, that's just the working name at the moment, has recently, unexpectedly from, from us anyway, become available, accessible. They are going full bore through there and it's already graded, dressed with topsoil. It's, it's ready to irrigate and, and plant now.
And Etani Drive is curb gutted and paved.
Yeah, it's just, it was amazing how fast that went.
I may have been the first civilian vehicle to drive up that on Sunday, so...
But the timing of that, it did not come about through the budgeting process, so we weren't, we weren't ready for that. But we did have money in the budget already planned to do the same thing out at Milton Arthur Park out by the old Slip and Burp, but that's still not accessible. So I just want to use that money for this. This winter, we'll, we'll be coming to you to counsel for authorization to hire a landscape architect to do the, you know, the actual professional designs of this park and Indian Hills Park. If there's enough money, even Lola Clyde Park, that way we know where to put the irrigation and seating and things like that. And so...
How large is that park?
It's just under an acre, about point eight-ish.
And what do you envision going there?
Well, what I would envision is just kind of a stereotypical neighborhood park. It's small, so probably a playground, some grass area, some park benches. Based on what we just went through with Indian Hills Park and the students over at the Landscape Architect Department, it's amazing what people can put on an acre of ground. So who knows what could actually end up here? And of course, that would be reality-driven as well as resident desire-driven and cost, of course, so...
Gary, if I remember correctly, the Salisbury phasing was changed so that, but we did retain the access to the park, which would, which would, in, in whatever next phase number is, one or two or whatever.
Well, three gets built first, but we retained the development of the access to the park and as part of the first phase.
Change the phasing timing.
Right. And he's looking at 2016 at the earliest now.
Right, he didn't, he didn't move this year.
Correct.
All right.
So I do have a few slides to show you just real quick, just so you can see. It's not real pretty, of course, at this point, but this is facing east on the park property. As, you can see it's graded out nice and flat. It's one of the few flat places we have in Moscow. Facing north, and of course, this is the park property, it actually comes this way a bit. Right through here will be where that pathway will go. This is, Etani Drive is up here. This is part, oops, sorry Gary. This is part of the park property here, but, and this is Milton Arthur Park where we were, that's where the money was planned for this, this year. And then, just as, this is just a quick example of one of the Indian Hills Park designs. I mean, that's just an acre, so, but the point that I wanted to make here, which is part of this, the reason to push for this, is once we have an official design, if you pretend like that is the design, then we would know what we could possibly phase without having to come and ask for, you know, a hundred grand or whatever it would cost. It could be just the trees, it could be money just for the pathways, you know, grants, things like that. So, an important piece of our master plan and, so this is a good move and it doesn't cost anything extra.
Isn't design going to affect irrigation?
Absolutely, that's why we need the, the design, but...
You need to know you've got the money if you...
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it and wondered why, you know, it would, it would rise to this, to back to council level really because, you know, it seems to be irrigation's irrigation, you know, parks is parks. You know, I don't know why we have...
It's a budget change.
Necessarily...
Yeah, if I may.
Budgeted directly.
Yeah, the idea, if it was just an amount of money that was in there for irrigation, just like we have money in there for planning, we wouldn't be back. But when Dwight came forward and said he wanted to do this...
This was dedicated to...
Yeah, we'd been telling the council that we needed this money for irrigation from Milton Arthur Park. We used it on something else, you come back and ask, well, where'd that money go that we put in there? We're just keeping you in the loop.
Okay.
So, could you refresh me a little bit more about the budget process? So we have money for Milton Arthur now, we want to borrow, I'll take that for use now because we're ready to go. Where does the money for Milton Arthur come from next?
Through the budget process, through the next budget, I'll just ask for it.
So the budget that would otherwise have been requested for Etani Park is now going to be called Milton Arthur Park?
Yeah. The, the money is general fund money that comes through part of the amount of money general fund supports the Parks Department. It wasn't paid by the Salisbury's or developers specifically for Milton Arthur Park. Those funds that are paid are segregated and kept with that park. These are just general fund money, so it's just taking something out of phase and allowing Dwight some flexibility to get a park up and running as quickly as he can.
But we've got other...
When you see the 2016 budget request...
There'll be a Milton Arthur package.
I will explain why.
And I, and I've got that in the packet here too.
Okay.
We'll be asking for it.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Dwight. Okay, next item.
One of our most familiar faces.
Mr. Recycle, Tim Davis, going to talk about single-stream recycling transition.
Good afternoon.
Regular.
Following the presentation that I gave to this committee, on October 13th, the committee requested staff to follow up with some additional accounting details for single-stream curbside recycling and also to contact some neighboring cities that have already implemented single-stream recycling to try to get an idea of what these tonnages might look like. I was able to get some pretty good numbers from four cities. City of Pullman, once they went to single-stream, they realized a, a 100% recycling tonnage increase. Same with the city of Spokane, their, their tonnage, their recycling tonnage doubled. They were able to give me some participation numbers as well. They went from 55% to 65% with the implementation of single-stream. Spokane said they also experienced about a 10% downsized from their customer base. In other words, 10% of their customers were able to downsize their service level as a result of single-stream recycling.
Of the, the garbage site?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yep. The city of Lewiston realized 160% recycling tonnage increase and that was after removing glass from curbside. I talked to Dan Johnson this morning about what they may have saw as far as reduction in glass. He said they did see a slight increase, but it wasn't anything major.
Were they on a bin system before?
Yes.
Similar to what we're doing?
Yes.
So they had the same challenges we have, you've got to sort it and keep it separate and all this stuff, okay?
Yeah. And then the city of Post Falls realized 114% recycling tonnage increase as a result of single-stream recycling, so...
And presumably those come out of the solid waste stream.
That's exactly what I was...
That's the presumption.
Mm-hmm.
Or assumption.
So what I did too is I broke down the existing costs of curbside recycling in Moscow for the individual residential customers since they are the only ones that have access to curbside recycling now. And they pay about $3.03 for our existing program, which comes out of our base fee, our refuse base fee that they're billed at each month. Apartment units over the size of fourplex do not currently receive access to curbside recycling and thus do not receive base fee charges for that service. Typically, the, the larger apartment complexes share the use of common dumpsters. It is anticipated that the same $3.03 per month per unit would be assessed to these apartment units for access to single-stream. The additional costs to implement single-stream curbside recycling will include the following, and we've talked about all these prior, but I, I feel more comfortable making projections now. Processing cost is the cost for the material recovery facility to separate the baled single-stream materials following collection and shipment. This cost is deducted directly from the material sales. And we have a quote of $73.39 per ton. We also talked about an offset cost, what would the city realize on the back end? Municipal solid waste disposal is that offset cost. This is a cost for long-haul transportation and disposal of our municipal solid waste to ship it down to Boardman, Oregon. So this is a back-end savings that would be realized for every ton of single-stream material that we collect. And this cost is $47.88 per ton. Then we've got the cost of the roll carts and we've got a couple of one-time equipment costs. And I've got an estimate from LSI on cart costs, which include roll carts for single-stream. It also includes two 20-yard roll-off containers for the additional glass depositories. A portion of the cost, which would be a, a one-time cost, would be for an equipment upgrade because obviously asking them to go from the system we have to single-stream is going to require a more sophisticated truck. So he, he would ask for a partial...
If you've seen the current truck, I'd consider that one the more sophisticated with all the different bins and things it has to handle and all that stuff.
Not, not as many moving parts and hydraulics and all that fun stuff. So the annual estimated cart cost would be $78,923 in that one-time cost, which includes the equipment upgrade. There's a one-time assembly and distribution of the carts, just like we had when we moved to roll carts for the garbage collection.
Tim, I'm having trouble with your $78,923. That's, that's half, that's half of the original setup every subsequent year. For what?
I have a spreadsheet that explains that as we move forward.
That one, I'm with you on everything until I get to the annual cart cost.
And again, these are just estimates. So the tonnage and processing, and I tried to explain this last time, I don't know how good a job I did, but our current annual residential curbside recycling tonnage has been averaging about 525 tons per year. If we exclude glass from that number, that number now becomes 327 tons. So by accessing the single-stream to apartments, I use that same participation rate and same tonnage rate to project what a base rate would be for tonnage using today's system, so I could just come up with a base tonnage. And then as you see below in the spreadsheet, I, I took the base tonnage and I showed 25% increases in that recycling tonnage up to 150%. So if we base it based on what we've seen in these other communities, I would project a 100% increase, which would be a $28,571 annual cost. That would be 24 cents per month per customer to cover that cost alone.
And that's after, and that's after taking out our savings of what we're not paying in tipping fees?
That includes that offset cost that I mentioned.
Okay.
So we take the processing cost and we subtract that offset cost, if you would, and we get a net cost of $25.51 per ton.
Well, it would seem, you know, and I don't, I mean, I don't know why the math wouldn't work out that the monthly rate would almost stay closer because you're taking that much more out of the waste stream. Is it, would we not be able to pass that savings over to that rate somehow?
You are, you are, your savings is less though than your cost, your cost of having it sorted.
Oh, okay.
It's handling the same materials as, do we handle it this way or do we handle it this way? So we are offsetting that cost.
It's cheaper to ship it to the landfill than it is to send it as single-stream and have somebody stand there and sort it.
Okay.
But you're also avoiding that cost to the landfill, so that's why you're deducting...
And offsets it.
Yep.
So, and then the next, next page, I've got a spreadsheet that lists the costs of the roll carts. And this is based off of what I received from LeTas sanitation as an estimate. And we had basically a week to put these numbers together based on today's costs. Cost of the carts are $375,000, $376,000 to round it off. We've got shipping charges to get those carts here, we've got two glass containers, we've got sales tax, and that computes down to a $78,923 annual cost based on his loan figures, which are on the bottom. That's seven years at 5.5% interest.
Okay, so the 78,9 is not a cart purchase number?
No, it includes a number of different...
Yeah, it's recapture of the setup costs and the initial capital cost.
Okay.
Not just carts alone, we're...
Okay.
But does that go away after seven years, so it's not really an annual cost? It's just annual cost over seven years?
The annual cost would be the annual cost until the end of the franchise agreement, which has about eight and a half years left on it. But we just use these figures for his loan numbers.
Looking forward to that renegotiation.
Well, if I may, yes, these are also his estimates.
Right, right.
Okay, so there are, Tim and I had this discussion on Friday about how long do these carts last? What's the recapture? Of course, fee, same thing when we, when we set up the original landfill. There was the cost of the knuckle boom crane that had to be amortized out over the period, so on and so forth. So in this situation, these are just to give the council some idea. Tim will then request a, if he's authorized, request an RFP from them and they'll have to do an actual proposal.
Then we'll get the actuals.
But there's also, where, Tim will continue to sharpen his pencil as well. If this recapture is too aggressive, or it should be less, then that's part of the negotiation process.
So, again, then, how much discussion have we had with, with LeTas sanitation, I guess? Other than Andy being here last time?
I, I met with Joe Johnson, who was the owner of LeTas sanitation, two times last week. We went over the numbers, we used the same spreadsheet we used on the roll cart program when we moved to roll carts for the solid waste. We talked about different ideas, how this concept might look and, you know, today's cost is today's cost for carts, so that change is almost monthly. But we tried to throw something together to give you folks an idea of what we may be looking at.
They pretty amenable then to the, the concept?
Yes, yes.
Do they do, do they do this down in, in Meridian now?
They do, however, Mr. Johnson is no longer affiliated, he sold that business down there. But they were doing that prior to the sale.
But he was the one that put this in down there, I think.
So he's, so they've got experience with it?
Yes.
That's where the separating the glass really started coming from? Didn't you mention that that's what they do down there?
They throw the glass, the glass is either haul it to the recycle center or drop it in the trash. Don't, don't put it in your recycled cart.
So based, based off the tonnage and processing projections that I've made and LSI, their estimates, the very last page is projected cost based off of those numbers. So the 303 of the base fee would remain. The processing fee would be, based on 100% increase, would be $82,196. Then you factor in the offset cost, which is $53,625 would be deducted from that. The cart cost from LSI's estimate and then the one-time fees, you're looking at an annual cost of $126,211, which amounts to a dollar and eight cents over what we're paying now.
And that's taking into account the apartment usage?
Correct.
And so that dollar and eight is an increase on everybody's bill? Or, or we can absorb that now with where our rates are? now with where our rates are?
We would want to recover that now.
So it's, that's the new, it's gonna be a new cost?
The new cost. And that's, yes.
Now, when can we, you know, if we say go, when would we start this?
We've gotta get a response from LSI.
Yeah, once we get the, I mean, do we put it during the fee structuring at budget year, or how would we do that?
Well, there are a couple of ways you can approach it. Tim wasn't avoiding your question.
No, I understand.
We probably could deplete some reserves or some funding that is in other places to get us through. However, we will have to recover it at some point in order to maintain stability.
That was my question, is what's the, you know, there'll probably be a lag.
At any time, the council can advertise, if there's an increase, we can advertise it and add that to the fee resolution at any time. The mechanics of this are our franchise allows us to request additional services like we did for roll carts for garbage collection, and they will respond. And once we get that response, we'll map out what we want. They'll give us a proposal and a price, and at that point, we can either reject it or accept it, or we can negotiate because they're the existing franchisee and because we're expanding the current service. If we cannot come to an agreement, then the council is free to move in other ways. So, like I said, it looks kind of bad because we've already got our amount of money, it's gonna increase per month, and we don't even have a proposal.
Right, right.
So these discussions without...
It may be more than this, it may be less than this.
Yes, and we, as Tim said, we put this together very quickly in order to get it to you, so there may be some other changes that come along. The proof in the pudding is going to be whatever LSI responds to.
Right.
And we appreciate you doing this, because I just, for one, was not comfortable moving ahead without knowing whether we're talking about zero increase to the customer, a dollar or $20 increase.
Right, right.
And if it were 20, I think this would have been dead before this meeting got started good.
But Tim did a heck of a job getting it done that quickly.
Absolutely.
Tim's, I don't want to jinx him, but his projections of cost and volumes on the changeover from buy your own garbage can to roll carts were pretty much dead on. He really did a great job. I, for that reason, have a reasonable amount of faith that the numbers he's got here will hold up, but I'm not gonna hold you to it.
Yeah, don't do that.
But...
Yes, sir. Well, for my part, I think that for a dollar and a dime a month, it's the right thing to do, just to keep stuff out of the landfill.
Do not have to hand sort it?
Well, I was thinking more on the other side, to keep stuff out of the landfill. But the only big concern I have is how to work the apartment buildings, given the comments that we heard a few weeks ago from the apartment owners about a whole mess of 96-gallon roll carts floating around in a parking lot versus a container.
Maybe a separate container, yeah.
Yeah, and so that's the only big cause of concern that I have.
That's something you can put in the RFP, make, just say, propose whatever you're, what would want to do.
Or give them the two options and let them speak to it.
And we're obviously not gonna ask apartment unit folks to wheel those carts out to the curb each week. I mean, there are a lot of different layouts and situations, but like Dan Schoenberg said when he was here and spoke, you know, that's a logistics thing, and that's something we just jump in and we make it work for the given situation. I'm not at all worried about that.
Other than that, I just think it's the right thing to do for a relatively minimal cost.
Yeah, I would be in favor of calling them out and seeing what they come back with.
Then it would seem to me that if we go ahead and take this to council for a short discussion, then we'll need some time to put that RFP together and some of those things.
Okay.
Or, if you like, we can go ahead...
Does it need to go to council, or do we have the authority to push it to RFP?
Was just going to say, we are prepared to move to RFP now, bring it back to you, and then take that to council.
I would prefer that.
Let's do that.
We can do that.
That'll be...
All right, that's tightening up the timeline a little that way.
It'll take a little time, but we can get that done.
There's at least one other council member in the room, and he's not jumping up and down waving his arm screaming, "Don't you dare do this."
[laughing]
That wasn't a vote.
And then bring the whole presentation to council. Yeah.
Are we okay?
Yep, we are, thank you.
Tim?
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks much, man. Nice job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell now is going to give us a report on the Steiner-White Avenue pedestrian underpass work that has been going now for a couple of three weeks, I think, if I remember right. You might want to set it up for those that missed the first chapter of the book.
I think I will do that here. Just provide a little background to set up the conversation. A pedestrian underpass of Highway 8 in the proximity of the Steiner and White intersection has been under consideration, or at least under discussion, for at least the last three years, utilizing the existing bridge structure in that location. The highway does serve as a significant barrier to access to the path from, really, a large percentage of the populated area of the community that's on the north side of Highway 8 and the pathway that's largely on the south side of Highway 8. Why my animation, I think, didn't get updated. We began the conversation in 2007 with a civil engineering class doing a capstone project to assess the feasibility of that underpass in 2011. And during the recent Moscow move transportation planning efforts, the underpass concept was identified as a high priority project in the transportation plan as well as within the Paradise Path Task Force for their work in providing greater connectivity to the pathway system. So just to provide a little bit of a location, so this is Highway 8. This is White Avenue on the north, Steiner on the south, and the concept was some form of underpass that would be located on the east side of the channel as the creek comes in here from the north, crosses, and then continues on to the west, trying to utilize that existing bridge structure. It's a fairly large structure today to be able to accommodate a pedestrian pathway that would make a transition from the roadway grade down below underneath the highway and then come back up to the path on the south side of Highway 8.
Bill, if you don't mind, your next slide may show it.
Okay.
But it never had occurred to me that your black line path actually goes over the creek.
It's not...
It doesn't stay on the same side.
No, it's not intended to. This is just a fuzzy line. It is intended to stay on the east side of the creek.
Okay, thank you.
Throughout the channel.
Okay.
So these are just a couple illustrations from the student study.
Buying a bridge under a bridge.
Correct. No, no. Now, there's a different bridge we talk about at some point in the future, connecting over from Lynn, but we won't go there today. So there, these are just a couple exhibits from the student project done in 2011. This is just a shot of that bridge structure and the underpass, some sediment depositions on the downstream side of the bridge. And then these were some concepts of, really, you're just going into that bridge structure and placing a structured fill where that path would sit upon there next to the side of the bridge here on the east side. And then these were some kind of three-dimensional models. They showed that pathway making its transition down underneath and passing underneath, and this was kind of a visualization of what that could look like in that location. So on October 6th, the council approved a phase study to verify the students' work. We had three phases. The first was to validate the classes, hydrologic and hydraulic assessments of the bridge structure. The second phase was to assess the constructibility and develop a concept design and cost estimate. And the third phase was to complete an environmental assessment, a wetland delineation, so we understood all that we needed for permitting for the project should the project move forward. A terographics engineering was selected as the firm to conduct that assessment, and we've been moving forward. So as I mentioned, progress to date, council approved that professional services agreement on October 6th. On the morning of the 7th, we issued notice to proceed on the project, and they actually had their field survey crew out there on the 7th, so...
Not letting any water get under the bridge.
All the field survey work was completed of the bridge structure, the bottom cords, the wing walls, and the channel, both upstream and downstream from the bridge itself, so all of that was surveyed in on October 7th. They've completed the hydrologic assessment to determine the designed peak flows for the 10, 25, 50, and 100-year events, and utilized that to compare against ITD's assessments previously on the bridge structure. So they used four different methodologies to evaluate what we expected those flows to be, to be able to input that into their hydraulic modeling of the bridge structure itself. They've completed the hydraulic modeling of the bridge opening. That included a 10-foot wide path underneath the bridge, and actually used both an 8 and 10, and it had no measurable difference in the outcomes. So that modeling is...
Assumes some head clearance, I presume?
Yeah, that assumes, and I noted an 8-foot wide path, they actually ran a 10-foot wide as well, as well as a minimum 8-foot clearance from the bottom bridge cord structure. So that was kind of their standard for the clearance. The modeling results indicate that the pathway would have minimal impacts upon flooding events, even using the most conservative assumption, which was ITD's assessment or the flows that they utilized in, well, nearly 30 years ago when that bridge structure was constructed. They had a fairly high flow event for the 50-year, which is really, ITD's critical storm is a 50-year event, and maintaining a minimum of 1 foot of freeboard for the 50-year event is their design standard for bridges today. So the terographics utilized that highest flow, utilizing these assumptions, and had minimal impacts. Actually, the flood elevation surface dropped slightly. That was largely in part to the roughness being reduced, so taking what is now some grass and stream channel bottom and putting in a smooth asphalt surface actually reduced the roughness and had a slight, very, very slight reduction in the flood surface elevation. It did increase flow velocities through there a little bit as well, so just because that roughness is now smoothed out, they're able to pass more water through the bridge structure. And the pathway components, the pathway itself and its supporting material took up a very small percentage of the total cross-sectional area in that bridge structure, so it had a minimal impact. So the next steps, and these are the preliminary...
Bill, before you move ahead, you may have said it, and I could have missed it. I believe we were told a couple of years ago when this was first discussed that the one that's similar to this in Pullman, the pathway floods periodically.
Correct.
Does the work they did under Steiner show periodic flooding of the pathway, or is it, would it be usable year-round short of a really big flood event?
It'll be flooded annually. On an annual basis, they anticipate it'll be inundated. That full analysis has not yet been completed. I actually was kind of hounding them to get a preliminary memo done, once their hydraulic modeling was to show that it had no adverse impact on flood elevations, so that we could have a conversation about possibly moving forward to Phase 2. The full analysis of how often and how frequently that'll be inundated will be coming this week, so I'll get that full result.
So we're almost out of Phase 1, is what?
We're reaching the very closing part of Phase 1. The hydraulic and hydrologic assessments are complete and show no adverse flood impacts. The one remaining question is how often and how frequently will it be inundated? The description in the memo indicates it will flood annually. The length and duration and the size of event that will cause that, they're still wrapping up, and so I'll get that information later this week.
But we basically don't want a path that's unusable 90% of the time, which, you know, eyeballing it, probably not.
No, eyeballing it, it's going to be usable 90% of the time and more likely inundate 10% of the time.
Right.
But the exact percentage we'll get and we'll have before the council can fully consider this.
So I guess the big thing, then, is we're likely to move into Phase 2.
That's staff recommendations. As you may recall, there were the three phases to the project as I described. Each of those were to be separately authorized by the council. The council had budgeted $5,000 for Phase 1, of which the actual cost is $4,200 within the Parks and Recreation Administration budget, and additional $10,000 in the council's non-prioritized projects line item. Staff, based upon the outcome of the results so far, is recommending that the project proceed to Phase 2 to develop that concept design and the cost estimate. We are bringing it just slightly early, otherwise we've got to wait till the next committee meeting and not until the 17th, and we are trying to keep the project moving forward with a potential grant application coming up in January, which is why it's coming slightly early.
Well, if we're gonna build it, we just will build it.
So anyhow, that's staff recommendation. We'll have a little more detail next week on Monday night, once we get the full analysis completed.
So you're planning, Gary, to move us to council Monday night as a action item?
Yes.
Anything?
No, I like it. Sounds promising.
Well, and it's, you know, we're reaching the steps. We didn't bump up against a wall yet, so...
And things are moving along as fast as anybody could ever have imagined.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I believe that concludes our agenda. Anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing, really.
We consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you, Gary.